Okay, it is 6 o'clock. We are going to call the special board meeting for the Stevens Point area public school district for June 12, 2017 to order. And Sue, could you do roll call and verification of quorum?
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Daley?
Here.
Mr. Evo?
Here.
Ms. Gerler?
Here.
Mr. Cantos?
Here.
Ms. Portson?
Here.
Ms. Rano?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Eight present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. So I'm going to just talk a little bit about the process tonight, and then I'm going to turn it over to Craig. First of all, I want to thank all of you for putting your name in to run for the school board. You are all incredibly qualified. Your resumes are all -- I'm speaking for myself, reading through them, but I'm not on behalf of the board, but I think this is such a wonderful thing that we have people stepping forward to want to help provide service to the district. And again, all of us really appreciate you taking the time and putting your name out there to help support our schools. Craig's going to go through the questions, and he's going to start with one person. He'll work through the five of you, and then he'll move and start with another person. So a different person for each question is answering first, so that all of you, except for one, will have the opportunity to start, and all of you, except for one, will have the opportunity to be the last person. So he's leaving. Get over here. So he's got the questions up here. You've all been able to see them and been able to think about them. We want to do it that way. We did it last year. We thought it worked very well because it really allows you the opportunity to do the research and have the background and not maybe be surprised by something that you just don't have off the top of your head. So again, with that?
Thanks, Meg.
Yep.
Just to reiterate just a little bit what Meg just said. I've got four questions. You've seen the questions. I'm going to start with Lisa, and we're just going to go down from Lisa, Mike, to Melissa, Dave, to Kurt. You're sitting in a random selection. We have four questions. Kurt, it's just all random. You won't have an opportunity. There's only four questions as we go through this. As Meg stated, we have -- thank you for coming. We appreciate your interest in being on the school board. You're all qualified, and you have great backgrounds. Unfortunately, we're only going to be able to select one person this evening. I'm going to begin with the questions, and Lisa, you're going to be first. Please tell us about yourself, your educational work experience, and any other information you would like to share with the board.
My husband and I moved to Stevens Point two years ago. He came to work for Sentry, and I was the stay-at-home mom to a three-year-old and an 18-month-old. So my first connection to Stevens Point was the school system because my son had just been diagnosed with autism. So I was lucky to find a support system with the Stevens Point Public Schools as my son entered the early childhood education program. So magazines. But prior to that, most of my work experience was with nonprofits. I spent five years working for the Nature Conservancy in Ohio where I was the Assistant Executive Director, dealing mainly with the Board of Trustees. And I handled scheduled board meetings, superboard minutes, basically kind of did most of the work that a board secretary would do for that. And then when we moved here, because I was a stay-at-home mom, I still wanted to continue working along those lines, so I became a board member for the Family Resource Center here in Stevens Point, which operated for a couple of years. And then, following that, I served on the Board of the Mid-State Sisters of Skate Roller Derby League. So we were founded as a nonprofit, and I worked for five years on that board in various capacities, leading committees and mostly handling public buildings. I'm a product of public education, and I'm a strong supporter of public education. And since I have the time and resources and the ability to serve, I thought that I would continue to support public education in this capacity if possible.
Thank you. Mike?
Well, first, let me thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you this evening and apply for the board. My name is Mike Wade, and my family and I have been here in Stevens Point for four years. We moved here in 2013. Originally from Texas, my wife Joyce and I have two children, Davis and Addie. Davis is at UW-Madison right now studying electrical engineering. And my daughter, we moved here, she was at PJ Jacobs, and she's now at SPAS, and I guess officially a junior with the end of the school year. I work in Rochelle at Central Wisconsin Electric Cooperative. I'm the CEO there. So I live here in Stevens Point, but I commute out to Rochelle each day, which I found in the summer. And Wisconsin is a little tricky. About half the roads are closed as they're working on roads between here and Rochelle. All of my career, I've worked for an electric cooperative. I've worked for different electric cooperatives. We're a small utility, but we have the cooperative business model. It does make me wonder if back in my service area, we are having some blinks or outages right now, which we may have. I have served on a number of boards through the years and would be an honored privilege to serve on the Stevens Point School Board.
Thank you. Melissa?
My name is Melissa Barkley. I went to college at Luther College with a double major in elementary education and in Spanish. I spent a semester studying in Mexico where I learned some Spanish, not as much as I would have hoped, but I did enjoy that. After that, I taught in Kansas Elementary Education, and I taught non-English speakers, so had a really great experience teaching them. I taught all kinds of grades from first to fourth to fifth. I was a sixth-rate writing teacher, so with an exclusive focus on that, I was actually teaching the non-English speakers how to write in Spanish. So I was helping them develop their writing skills in Spanish. And I was also a technology mentor there. I grew up in Wisconsin and was looking for a way to move back, so I was able to move back and teach in Wausau. I taught at the Technical College for a little while, and then in fourth and fifth grade in the Wausau Public School District. After I received a master's degree in technology education, I left teaching and went to work for Renaissance Learning where I wrote professional development materials for teachers that were using our products. And now I manage a team of teachers that do that, and I'm also a senior product consultant that works with mostly our assessment products and developing that and offering suggestions for that, for more product can go in the future. I have -- I live in Plover. My husband is an attorney there, and I have two daughters, one at Pover Whiting and one that'll be going into SPAS.
Thank you.
Hey. Good evening. My name is David Clark. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to be here. I really appreciate it. So education-wise, I am a 1995 graduate, a proud graduate of the Ohio State University. Don't hold that against me. I have a degree in computer and information science. It's an engineering degree, and a minor in mathematics. And I've had the opportunity to work for a number of companies throughout my 20-plus professional career, and in that time, I've served several industries, including the education industry, and I've served in many different roles. So I'm currently employed by Renaissance Learning. Melissa and I did not know each other was going to be here tonight. It's complete coincidence. In my role with Renaissance, I lead what's called our Program Management Office. I do have three children. My wife and I, Jean, moved here almost 11 years ago. We could have moved anywhere in the nation. We chose Stevens Point. Very happy that we did. Been very involved in the community, several non-for-profit organizations. I've kept up with continuing professional education and have several certification, credentials, designations. And my children, Emma, Abby, and Hannah, will be entering PJ's this fall, so we're looking forward to that.
Thank you. Ryan, Kurt?
Hi, Kurt Povermacher. Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity. I'm happy to be back here and kind of present my, I guess, my shrinks to the board. So I grew up in a small town about hours south here called Princeton, Wisconsin, went to public school there, graduated from Princeton, and went to UWSP. I have a Ph.D. degree from Point. So over the years, I got into the energy industry, and so I've worked for about 15 years now in the energy efficiency, sustainable energy industry. It's been everything from working with homeowners to working with commercial industrial customers doing energy audits. Most all that work has either been with nonprofits or with municipal utilities. So I have a lot of experience working with boards, being on the side of an employee that would present to the board about what the board needed information on, so whether that was energy efficiency projects, metering projects, whatever it would be, understanding the information that they need and being able to present it to them so that they were able to make decisions. While I was in my -- during my work career, I picked up my MBA from UW-Madison, so I believe that it's been a nice strength. It's given me the ability to be much more analytical in my approach to decision-making, not only just data, but also thinking through the softer information that maybe you can't always put the hard numbers to. So I moved to Stevens Point about seven years ago with my wife. We have two sons, Owen, who is a third grader, I believe. Actually, my boy is in the same, or was in the same grade as your daughter, Dan, at Pover Whiting, or I'm sorry, MacDill. I don't know why my child's in school. And then I have a boy that's entering 4K this year at the UCLCC. And so both my wife and I work remotely, so we're able to work from home, and with that, we probably could live anywhere in Wisconsin and maybe even anywhere in the Midwest, and we've chosen to settle in Stevens Point, partly because her family is from the area, but also because we find it to be a really nice community, and obviously part of that is the schools for us. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll begin with Mike. What unique value will you bring as a member of the school board?
I think working for an electric cooperative maybe is somewhat akin to a school district. We are member-owned. I work directly for a Board of Directors who are elected by the membership and who are accountable to the membership for the decisions that they make. So I work very closely with my board. They meet once a month. They have several committees they work through, a governance committee and a finance committee. So I spend a certain amount of my time working on policies and procedures, service rules that the cooperative is to follow. And we spend a good amount of time each year working on our budget. Our budget really doesn't compare to the Stevens Point School District budget, but it's significant enough that we have to spend the time to make sure that we're spending our members' money in the way they would like us to. So I think in my role as the CEO of the co-op, I understand the board, I understand how they operate, I understand how important it is for board members to be independent, make independent decisions. But I also understand at the end of the day, when you make a decision, whether you agree with it or not, you need to support it as a board member. So that is something that I bring to the table. I have years of experience on maybe the business side, not necessarily on the education side, but the business side of working at a company. It's not really a part of my job that I enjoy as much, but I do spend a certain amount of time during the year working on behalf of all co-ops through our lobbying efforts. So I spend a few days every year in Madison, talking with our legislators about issues that are very important for electric co-ops and rural Wisconsin. And I go to Washington DC every year for really the same thing, talk to our senators and our representatives about issues that are important to us. So those are just a few things that I feel I have to bring to the table.
Thank you. Melissa?
What I feel that I bring uniquely to this position is the combination of my experience as a teacher, as a business in the corporate world, and then also as a parent, working in the district and with multiple school districts. So as a teacher, as I explained, I was a teacher for a number of years, so I kind of know that boots on the ground, those real pressures that teachers face and the real stresses that they have. And even while I was doing that work, though, I also got a taste of some of the leadership that was there, too. I started taking classes in, like being a principal and taking a leadership role at the school district. Ultimately decided that that wasn't for me, but through that opportunity, had a chance to work with the board in Kansas especially, with the school board in financial decisions and making those hard, hard financial decisions that I know you're forced to make or anyone that's working in schools need to make. So that continued even as I taught in Wausau, working in various capacities, giving presentations to the board and advocating for where we felt things were important, and then listening to those same presentations from others and then saying, "Oh yeah, I see real value in that, too," and ultimately how people were able to make those tough decisions. In the corporate world, making those difficult decisions was also something that I've had to do a lot more often. The money is limited, the direction we can go can't be scattered in random. We need to make a decision, and we need to move forward. And I've really grown my skills and my capacity to do that. And then as a parent, working with teachers and staff, faculty at Pover Whiting. I'm also a Girl Scout troop leader. We came and we did the pledge one day here, two years ago, I believe it was. And I was also on the committee that hired Craig for the position, and found those to be really positive experiences. So in doing those things as a parent, as well as being in the corporate world and having that experience as a teacher, I feel that really uniquely qualifies me to be appointed to the board.
Thank you. David?
Not unlike the other strong candidates, I bring the perspective of a parent with children in Stevens Point, a taxpayer, an active member of the community. Additionally, I bring the perspective of working for a company in the education industry, so we deal with challenges of what's happening with districts all across the nation. So I bring that perspective. I've spent the majority of my professional career leading teams and going from strategy and vision to execution and delivery. That's my profession, that's what I do. I work for, I serve the senior executive team at Renaissance, and you know, my function is mainly to help realize the results of what we need to do. But in doing that, there's a complexity that comes with it. There is the complexity of very diverse teams, of very different stakeholders with different values or different needs, the effectiveness of cooperation and collaboration to get things done. So you know, what I largely bring is the ability to help find a path towards complexity to accomplish the goals and the outcomes that are needed. I also have served on a number of boards, including the National Project Management Institute, PMI. I was a past president of the Central Wisconsin Children's Museum, an active board member there, and helped provide strategic planning for a number of other boards or nonprofits in the area. And that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you. Kurt?
So as you all know, I was here back in December when the last interim position was open, and I chose not to run in spring because I think that this board is a good board. But yet I still have an interest to be here, and that's why when this position opened up, I put my name in the hat again. And so I think the board has done some great things, and I would want to continue to be able to support that. I think what I bring is the unique perspective I think many other people articulated is being an analytical person, being able to understand numbers, being able to do the analysis myself, or be able to understand somebody else's analysis that brings it to me, to be able to look at dollars and cents and make decisions that are in the best long-term interest of the students in the school district, I believe is a strength of mine. I know that many others mention that they have children in the school district. Probably what'd be a little bit more unique about me is the age of my children. So I have one, as I mentioned, entering 4K, so for all intents and purposes, I expect to be in the school district until, you know, my sons graduate from SPAS. And so when the school board is facing decisions about, you know, whether it's the length of the school day, and they're getting, you know, a lot of feedback from the public, it's always nice to be able to have maybe somebody that is representing the public that is being affected by that on the school board. And I think that is something that I can bring. I know that many other school board members also have children involved in the school district. It's just the age of my children, I think, is maybe what's a little bit unique from my standpoint.
Thank you. The next question will be -- oh, I'm sorry. Got to go on the backside. Lisa?
As I said, when we moved here 10 years ago, Stevens Point School District was really our first support system here in the community. Three years ago, my husband left Sentry. We moved here so that he could work at Sentry, and three years ago, he left Sentry. They stopped selling property casualty insurance, which is what he does, so he started looking around for other jobs. And he found a job in Madison, and he works for American Family Insurance, and he commutes an hour and 15 minutes a day, one way, because we made an active choice to stay in this community. My children have thrived in the Stevens Point School District. I was lucky enough to spend the last 10 years to be able to be in schools almost on a daily basis. I volunteered in my children's classrooms, and I served as the PTO president for Washington Elementary for a couple of years. I've fundraised, I've organized, I've supported the teachers, I've worked closely with the principal, worked with other PTO members to develop programs and share ideas in round tables so that we could, you know, each of us could try to make our schools a better place. I am a journalist by training, and I believe that the most important job of any public servant is to listen more than to speak. And I've been trained to listen and to really gather information before distilling it into any other form. So I think that's really where my skill set lies, is engaging in public and being able to listen and ask the right questions before making a decision on anything.
Thank you. The third question. List the top two issues you feel the district is facing, and we're going to begin with Melissa.
The first one is that I feel is important is maintaining high standards and high quality of education with increasing financial pressures that schools across the state and across the country are facing. And that can be a real challenge, really difficult to make those decisions that really get, maintain that high standard, but then also provide the high-quality education that our students and our community is used to. So that's something I'm definitely interested in. Related to that is ensuring that we're preparing students for the jobs of the future. And, you know, through my experience in education and having to take those classes where you learn about the history of education and things and how it's changed through the years, I found it really interesting to reflect on the changes that have happened in education through the years and how we're in a really interesting place right now with jobs and the global economy that we work in, and making sure that students have the opportunities that they need to find a successful career and be successful. So I think that includes things like partnerships with community colleges and UW-Stevens Point and other places, and businesses in order to make sure that we're really preparing the students for the future.
Thank you. David?
Overall, I feel the district is doing an amazing job, you know, and should feel very proud of the progress that has been made. You know, there's a lot of challenges that only face this district but other districts across the nation. It's hard to pick two. One that is near and dear, I guess, to my heart is literacy. I think it's a very important issue, not just for this district, but for districts nationwide or even worldwide. You know, research has shown that early learning, reading, is fundamental to learning in all categories, and that third-grade reading levels do have a direct impact on future success and performance. So that's a very important area, I think, needs attention. I think a second area that is a challenge for the district is the ever-increasing complexity of expectations of staff and of educators. I believe that, you know, they're dealing not only with the academic pressures increasing over the years, over time, but they're also dealing with a number of other challenges, including behavioral challenges, mental health and wellness, personalized learning, technology that's continuing to get more complicated, curriculum changes, and the list goes on and on and on, time to do administrative work and lesson planning, et cetera. I know you asked for two, but I do want to squeeze one more in because I was part of the Strategic Planning Committee, and I think it became very evident to me that we have an aging facility situation in this district that needs attention. And from Maslow's hierarchy of needs, having that core foundation is critical for the future, and so I believe that that's an important challenge as well.
Thank you. Kurt?
Well, my answer hasn't changed on this since December. So I mean, I know it's a little bit ridiculous maybe to say it that way, but it's money in money. And if I had a magic wand and I waved it, and we were able to double this district's money tomorrow, I'm guessing that a lot of that money could be still well-spent. And so we need to be able to make decisions that free up the dollars, that enable Craig and his staff and all the school teachers and everybody in the district to be able to best be able to serve our students. And that means better facilities, it means better student-to-teacher ratios, whatever we can do to enable our students to have a better learning opportunity. And so the budget's tight. It's probably going to be tight for the foreseeable future. And so that means tough decisions need to be made. Facilities are important. People, though, that have children in this district right now want to make sure that those children are getting a good education, and so it's hard to always weigh those decisions. And that's just where it comes back to analytics and being able to try to make those decisions that are in the best long-term interest of the most amount of people. And so I hate to be all about dollars and cents, but I think if we had enough money, so many of the problems that, or challenges that we'd have with the district would be minimized.
Thank you. Lisa?
The top two issues that I feel that this particular district is facing, of course, going to add, pile on, is the budget issues. I think we're faced with ever-shrinking resources and ever-increasing needs, and public education is really the foundation of any good community. I mean, it's absolutely vital that we be able to provide every student with the best quality education that we can provide with them. So, you know, stretching resources and figuring out where to get the money, what to do with what money we have will always be kind of a top issue facing any district, but definitely Stevens Point. And the second issue I feel really, and this issue's nationwide and statewide, is attracting and hiring quality teachers. Again, with shrinking budgets, that becomes a challenge. I think teachers I think teachers in this district sometimes can feel down about what's going on, but I've been here in the schools in the last 10 years, and they do an amazing job. And certainly, this organization has been great with trying to provide them the wherewithal to do what they do because that's really all that they care about. And I would be proud to be a part of providing that for them, so.
Thank you. Mike?
From my office in Rochelle, I, every day, I look at the local papers for all the small communities in my service area. And one thing that is very common is you read those newspapers and you read about the school districts as they talk about the challenges. They talk about referendums, they talk about raising the funds they need to operate the schools and the way the parents and the community want them to be operated and offer the services that is demanded of them. Those small school districts are consolidating, they're having a hard time finding qualified teachers that will stay in the area. So, I'm sure those are all challenges that the Stevens Point school system faces. I think maybe even a greater concern of that to me is how to, even though we have a lack of those things sometimes, how do we prepare our children for this new 21st century that we live in? I know with my kids, I'm, I'm an email guy. I thought I was cutting-edge. My kids don't use email. Now, they use 10 other different forms of electronic communication, but email is not one of them. So, how do school districts, including Stevens Point, prepare those kids for this world out there that maybe we're not real comfortable with, maybe we don't fully understand? I think the school district does an excellent job of providing diverse education. My two children are, they're night and day from one another. My son studies engineering, and we were always very pleased with the engineering project Lead the Way classes he was able to take at SPAS. My daughter is into art and is much more visual than my son, but there are plenty of classes that are for her. So, I think the school district is doing a great job of addressing education for kids in this new environment. But I think long-term, that's going to be something that the district's going to have to be very vigilant about, and it's going to be an ongoing challenge.
Thank you. And the last question, if you are appointed to the school board, is it your intention to run for your seat in the April election? David?
Well, it certainly would be a wonderful privilege to be on the board for the next 10-ish months and then to have the opportunity. You know, while I can't exactly predict what the landscape would look like 10 months from now, I certainly would have that strong desire based on what I know today, and I would hope that, you know, my effectiveness over the next many months would convince the public that I would be, you know, a strong candidate going forward. So, yes.
Thank you. Kurt?
Yes, I mean, it's been my experience with board members that it really takes a while to get acclimated and really be able to be up to speed and be that effective member. And so, while I definitely would be looking to contribute in those first 10 months, I think that my strength to the community and the school district would only be able to continue to grow if I were to run again, and that would be my intention.
Thank you. Lisa?
I've been encouraged to run before, and I've finally taken the step to put my head in the ring, but it would really depend on how well I did. I mean, it would be, I would certainly love to run for a position. This is a unique opportunity for someone to get into the position and actually learn the position because that really is the most important, first part of any job is the learning curve and mastering what you need to know. And it's not about an agenda or a particular issue, it's just really learning the job and becoming an effective public servant. So, I mean, I would certainly love to if I, if I get the opportunity to serve, I would love to run again.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes, if I was appointed to the board, I would run in the spring.
Thank you. And Melissa?
Yes, short and sweet, yes, I would. I would love to have that opportunity to run again. Something I've always wanted to do is be on a school board, so I intend to pursue it.
Well, thank you. That concludes our questions. From here, I'm going to turn it over to Meg, and the board is actually going to cast a vote. In the event there's a tie, we would then have to take the, we'll do a tiebreaker and re-vote. So, at this time, if I could ask you to have a seat in the audience, please.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Board members, you need to move to spread your room, and then let's pass on the votes.
Do we need?
Oh, no, yeah, we can just, okay. No, go ahead. No, that's, so, what we're going to do, it's important, vote for one candidate. You need to sign the document that's required under Wisconsin statute. These will be blind, though, they're at least tonight. The votes will be tabulated, and Craig will indicate whether we have someone who has received more votes than others. In the event, again, there's a tie, then we'll have to do a re-vote until we wind up with someone. So, go ahead and vote, and then we will hand those ballots to Craig.
A good problem to have.
Wow.
My neighbors.
I don't believe there's trees down.
One, two.
Sue's got the rest of them, Craig.
Except for Chris's.
Here's a pen.
I had, no wonder you couldn't write it, I stole your pen.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven.
We saved them.
Jason says there's no power at Honda, which is the airport.
You have been selected to serve on the Stevens Point Area Public School District.
So, I want to again thank all of you who have applied. I also want to put a big plug in, with Mike being appointed to the school board, we are going to have an opening on the Business Services Committee immediately. We also have an opening on our Educational Services Committee. And we are going to be putting those vacancies out. We were waiting this evening to determine what those vacancies were going to be, but we will be listing those vacancies, and we're going to be having a board meeting at the end of this month. We will be appointing members to those committees. So, if you have any interest in beginning service with us on one of those committees, I would strongly encourage you to apply because with this board, we really do a lot of work at the committee level. I mean, that's where the groundwork is done, that's where a lot of the sifting and a lot of the questions and a lot of the sending things back for clarification happens. And all of you would be incredibly helpful to us in that capacity. So, thank you again.
What? Okay, so, I do need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Hold a second. With Dan, all of us in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right, meeting is adjourned.